Good morning. We'd like to welcome you out to this morning's City Council study session. We'd like to excuse our good mayor, who is out of town on travel. We'd like to start first with, our first item is 1A, to hear a presentation, discuss, and provide direction regarding the city applying for a historic landmark zoning overlay for a city-owned facility located at 59 East First Street. Mr. Wesley.
Vice Mayor, Councilmember Summers. We were here to the council back in December, asking for initial direction on whether to proceed with historic landmark overlay zoning on the property at 59 East First Avenue, where, or First Street, excuse me, where the ITD currently occupies the building that was originally built as a library, or to maybe take a different approach to helping preserve that building. The council gave us direction to proceed with developing an application, and asked us to come back to you with our project narrative, so you could see where we're going, and make sure we're heading in the right direction before we proceed on through that process. So, we have created that narrative, and provided that to you, and based on your input today, see if we're ready to move forward then through that process. The actual process for approval of that overlay district would be first to go to the Historic Preservation Board, well, I guess, including the participation process that goes with that, and then on to the Planning and Zoning Board for their review and recommendation, and finally back to council for actual action to establish that district. Our goal, what we're going to try to accomplish, is to have that done and be back to you before you take your summer break. So, we've sent you a copy of that narrative as we have prepared it, starting on the bottom of page three, and on page four is the real essence of it, in terms of the conditions, criteria that we're proposing to go with this particular district. Trying to balance the needs of the ITD Department in use of that building, and their need to be able to respond to the continuing technology needs of the city, and maybe have emergency situations that would come up, and with, balancing that with the desire to preserve this important historic building for the city. And so, we've tried to look at what those key features are, and outline in the project narrative those times, when they can just continue to maintain the building and do those things inside, without any need for review by the Historic Preservation Office. Look to particularly protect the First Street side of the building, that's the side the public sees the most, really has that impression of, and then, so, really trying to encourage no modifications on that side. And then, as you move around to the east, there could be modifications, but we want to review them. Same thing on the south and on the west side of the building, that really anything could happen. Continuing to use, add, modify antennas on the top of the building, as long as they're not visible. Maintaining that stairway on the interior is kind of the only interior piece that we're looking at, trying to maintain. So, and then the wave-covered walkways on the south side, kind of the main thing on that particular side. Then we also have an interesting, continuing to look at the opportunity to build or reestablish the fountain that was on the building before, as part of the original plans at least. That may not happen until there be some other use of the building, but we want to keep that in mind as an opportunity. And also, we have in the project narrative recognition of the fact that there's some study being done of this whole block, and as we do that, to keep this building in mind and its historic integrity, and how they might interrelate. So, that's a real quick summary of what's in the project narrative. We've shown this to the IT Department, they're okay with the conditions. Ron Peters, who helped initiate this process, is satisfied with the project narrative as it's written today, knowing again that we'll be going through the public hearing process, and there, you know, there may be some adjustments that come through that process, as we get some other public input, and the Historic Preservation Board, the KZ Board, it might come back to you just a little bit different, but should be essentially the same. Any questions or comments that council has?
Yes, Councilmember Summers.
Could you better define for me, it says on the first page, just allow modifications and additions to east, south, and west sides. What's the, what are the limitations and of that? What's possible, what's the limiting factor?
Okay. Vice Mayor, Councilmember Summers. What we're thinking again on the north side is that along First Street, that's the primary public view of the building, and so, what it says in here, that there shouldn't be any really modifications to that north side. On the east side, modifications could happen, there could be additions on to the building and that type of thing, but they'd have to follow the Secretary of Interior standards for making those kinds of additions and modifications. And there are standards that are out there that would be used, in terms of how those attachments would take place, and what manner, so that you could still understand and see the historic building and its integrity. Then just move on to the south side, a little bit more activity could happen there, because it's less visible to the public. I think if there are any of those emergency-type repairs and activities, they're probably going to come in from that south side. But again, we could be a little bit more loose in what happens there. The main thing that we talked about on the south side, are those wave-covered walkways that are kind of a defining feature on that side, and so, we'd be looking to maintain the view and appearance of those. Again, the east side, or, excuse me, the west side, because that's between these two buildings, not really visible, about anything could happen in there.
So, just hypothetically, when you travel places like Washington DC or San Antonio, they're trying to preserve certain elements of their historic downtown buildings, while still allowing for the growth of their community. So, in, say, 20 years, that space is full, and we want to add the mid-rise building over it, would we be able to do that, preserving the facade along the front, the east, and then the little wavy parts around it, or could we build up and around it?
I hadn't really thought about the building up. There probably are secretary standards for how you would do that, but I'm not as familiar with, hadn't looked at that, as much as would be building beside it, and maybe going up there. Whether we should review that?
While we have a moment here, we have two folks from our Historic Preservation Committee. We'd like to welcome you up, come up and have some, a couple of seats with us here, if you would, Ron, and maybe introduce yourselves, please. And Donna, thank you. We know you put a lot of work into this. Councilmember Richens.
I know this is going to sound bad, but on slide five, it says demolition allowed following ordinance required procedures. Can you walk us through what it would take?
Vice Mayor, Councilmember Richens, the ordinance provides that once a structure has historic designation, if somebody wants to demolish the building, they have to, before they get that demolition permit, they have to apply through the Historic Preservation Office, and the first priority is to look and see if there's some way to save or move the building, so it's not demolished. It requires 180-day wait period before that demolition permit can be issued, so we can review alternatives to that demolition of the building.
Is that waiting period in our, in our city code now?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
And so, that's what would apply here. The exception to that is if there's some life safety reason why waiting that long would be a problem. Otherwise, it's that 180-day wait before the demolition could happen. But ultimately, after that 180-day wait, if you haven't resolved any other alternative for the building, could be demolished.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Kavanaugh. Oh, let's introduce, if you would, please, take a moment to introduce yourselves.
I'm Donna Benz, Chair of the Historic Preservation Board.
Ron Peters, I represent the Mesa Preservation Foundation and my local preservation architect.
Well, we appreciate having you here, and I'm sure you're available for any questions or comments we'd love to hear as we go through this process. I know you put a lot of work into this, and looking at the opportunities. Councilmember Kavanaugh.
Thank you, and I just wanted to follow up with Donna, or Ron. In looking at where we're at, in starting this process, to bring it to the Historic Preservation Board and Planning and Zoning, are you comfortable with where, what we're starting with, in terms of our proposal and narrative here?
What you're starting with?
Right, in terms of what John has said, here's what the process will be, here's what the proposal conditions would be, and in a general framework, are, do you have a degree of comfort with what the city, what John is proposing, to bring both to your board and Ron, for the Preservation Foundation to look at as well?
What he's proposing, I think, is all right.
Vice Mayor Finter, members of the council. I'm always one that leads towards more restrictive than less restrictive. I believe this is a good start. We have to go through the public hearing process, which I believe is the appropriate way to go. Let's hear from the public and see what they have, and what kind of input they put into this, but I believe this is a good start. I really would not like to see anything done or touched to the building unless it went through the Historic Preservation Committee. City went through a lot of, a long process to establish that committee, and as an advisory board to this council, and I believe, you know, they have a role to play in the city when it comes to preservation. And I believe anything that would be done to the building really should go through the entire Historic Preservation Committee, and then their recommendation made to this board. That's the process. So, I'm really not interested, even though I think this is a great start, I think the process is appropriate, we take it through the public, we get input from them, we hear from them as to what their feelings is about this, and then we go from there. I believe the ordinance and the Secretary of Interior standards allow modifications to historic buildings. There's a process you go through, there's a way you can modify these buildings, so that you can still have it function as a city facility. I don't believe anything we're doing here is going to, you know, be a detriment to that building, or harm the city in any way, as to utilizing it as an information technology building, or some other use in the future. I mean, I think the mayor last time was extremely wise in saying, "Information technology is changing so fast, we can't keep up with it." And the chances of you having Google, or somebody else do your information technology, you know, down the line, is probably something that's going to eventually happen. But, I believe this is the process, this is a good step, I'm very supportive of this, and my suggestion is, let's move forward to the public hearings and see where it goes from there.
Thank you. Councilmember Summers.
In that vein, Mr. Brady, what does our IT Department feel about their current future needs, and does adding this designation of the building restrict what they can do to expand, given our anticipated future needs?
Thank you, Vice Mayor, Councilmember Summers. I believe John mentioned that he had collaborated with the department. While I understand the idea that it may seem that ITD seems to, in a world of technology, would seem to contract, it's actually been our experience, it's gone the other direction. And it's not necessarily in the software, or the hardware side, it's its power supplies and backup generators, and assured energy supplies is what it is. But, Diane, do you want to?
Vice Mayor, Attorney in Council. Yes, we've worked quite a bit with some of the conditions that you see in there, because we do have needs to put in a satellite to expand some of the wireless capability and those kinds of things, so that's why we put some of those examples. And in many of those cases, yes, there's a process, but that length of process can actually inhibit what we're trying to do. Emergency conditions, when we have maybe emergency generator failure, those kind of things may require some of the immediate remodeling to the building, albeit not the front-facing side that the public sees. So, we do support some of the conditions that are being put in there to keep the daily business. And as far as the future, while I understand the marketing and information that's around the Google and the cloud and all that is there, there's a very real practicality of the network equipment that will be staying in the city. There are so many things that will not move to the cloud as fast as people anticipate that it will, and the city will have a need for a data center for a very long time.
Do we anticipate this serving the needs of the data center for a very long time, or are we going to have to look for a different facility at some point?
I would love a different facility at some point, but we have invested significant --
I'll support you in that effort, and if you need help from me.
I'm also being very realist to the practicality of a future new building, so we have invested a lot of money in that existing building, to have a quality data center in the center of that old library building. And then, of course, we will look to where the future is on a different building.
You want this building? Sell it, take it for a dollar.
We can talk offline.
Well, okay. You know, the only concern I would have is, I know we're going through a kind of a planning process, an urban planning process, looking at what might possibly happen in downtown as a gathering place and others, so, have we, I'm sure we've taken that into consideration as we, you know, go through that process also, so how do you see that impacting?
Vice Mayor, yes, you're right, we are particularly looking at this block, and how it might transition over time, and provide for gathering space for downtown activities and redevelopment, and to meet both city needs, and maybe other needs, as we develop a stronger urban core for Mesa. And so, yes, as we're looking at those opportunities for this, it will, it will consider this building, and how those things can happen, and maintain this building, and then some of it may also look at how those really need to happen that would replace this building. But, we'll keep those in mind, and know that we've got, you know, these competing needs, and try to look for the best alternative.
Wonderful, thank you. Any other questions? Well, well, we appreciate the presentation, so what is our next steps, Mr. Wesley?
If the project narrative looks good, the council's a place to start, to, in your direction to proceed forward through the public hearing process with this, is what we're looking for.
Okay, so how are we feeling? Proceed? Yes? Mr. Richens, proceed, you good with that?
Yeah.
Okay, very good, then, we'll go ahead with it. Thank you so much, thanks for taking the time to be here with us today, we appreciate it. Okay, the next item is to hear a presentation and discuss the septic-to-sewer transition program.
This isn't going to be a waste of time, is it?
Yeah, right. Feel free to, somebody's got to do it, huh?
Good morning, Vice Mayor and Council.
Yes, feel free to introduce yourselves.
You guys know Christine Zalanka, head of our Development and Sustainability Department. Also with us today is Bill Fick, he's one of our senior civil engineers over in the Water Resources Department, he's been instrumental in this program. I, before we get started, I want to say that you guys are clearly the best council in the valley, if not the state, as evidenced by your willingness to get up early and discuss this subject. And I really appreciate it, and I want you to know how much we do appreciate it. Okay.
Go on. No, go on.
That's how it's done. Is everybody paying attention?
Yes. Thank you, so onward, yeah. So, this is a map of the major septic areas in our city, and I want to warn you that we may have missed a couple, you know, we think we know where most of the septic systems are, but there may be a few stragglers out there that we're not aware of. And we talked to you about this about a year ago, this is, this represents, to the best of our knowledge, about 24,000 lots, so there, there is quite a bit of septic out, particularly in East Mesa. So, we, last year, we came to you with a new program, and that was that the city would begin to extend sewer lines into neighborhoods where they currently do not exist. And we talked to you at that point, that we would come up with a way to prioritize where those efforts would first occur, because, as you can see from some of the slides you have in front of you, this is a $100 million problem, it's an expensive problem. Frankly, in our wastewater CIP, the next priority that we really need to be looking to is expansion of our Greenfield Water Reclamation Plant, which is probably in its next phase, about $60 to $70 million. So, this $100 million chunk of extending sewer lines is really, it's something that we have to take relatively slowly, and that we will try to accomplish over the course of probably several decades. And we talked about that, so that's the importance of kind of prioritizing where we go first. And just also to remind you that the idea behind this program is that once we extend these sewer lines into a neighborhood, and then a single-family residential, existing single-family residential homes' septic system goes bad, or needs to be replaced, that that homeowner at that time would be required to tie into the new system. They would also at that time have to pay the impact fee for connecting into the wastewater system, and of course, you know, pay for the lateral that goes from their home to the public sewer. We are hopeful that that cost is generally ballpark and comparable to replacing a septic system. That was kind of the point of this program. So, new single, new single-family residences, as they come into the city, regardless of whether they're in one of these areas or not, Christine can talk more to this if you have questions, they'll be required to install, even though, even if they're going to go on septic to begin with, because they're just not in, you know, they're too far away from the system, they would be required to install plumbing that would be consistent with future availability of a sewer system. And of course, this program is, is really a program meant to bring relief to existing mom-and-pop, single-family residential properties, commercial developers, multifamily developers, subdivisions, they're still required to extend sewer lines and tie into the sewer system in all cases. So, we looked at several criteria for prioritizing these areas. Environmental impact, Scott Boucher was really helpful in that, as was Christine, I'm sorry. And location, whether they were in the city or outside city boundaries, the age of the homes, which we hope is a general indicator of the age of the septic system, the number of lots in the area, extension costs, a whole bunch of different criteria were used. And you have the results in front of you. And our next step, then, is to work with the Neighborhood Services, and go out and actually survey these, the top five areas that we have identified, and see what kind of reaction we get from the neighborhoods. And then, depending on what kind of reaction we do receive, we might, you know, change the priorities, and come back to the Sustainability and Transportation Committee to further refine those priorities. From there, then, we're hopeful that we'll get our first project, you know, going. We'd like to get a few of these under our belt, we're hoping to include our first project in fiscal year 13, 14.
Yes.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Dr. Sturzen, I just wondered, did you, is it included in here, that big package that you showed, how you got all those numbers? See, that was the cool data, I really liked that.
Yes, I'm sorry, should, it was part of your council packet?
Oh.
The scoring.
Okay, I missed it. Okay, great.
I'm sorry, it was a separate attachment.
No, I just think the work that you guys did to go into that, to make decisions, was just really great, and that's why I wanted you guys to come to full council and share, because, I mean, it's quite extensive to look at the whole city, come up with a rating system, and I think it was a great process, and of course, we're going to continue down the road of the process, like you said, it's very expensive and very, it's going to take years. But, there's a start, so we had to start somewhere, so thank you.
Thanks.
Yes, Ms. Brady.
Catherine, remind us, we've allocated annually --
Right, so we've --
Because, I mean, this is, as Councilwoman Higgins mentioned, it's a large number, you know, $30 million on the first page, it's a big number. We're not, we don't see that as something we're going to go tackle the next five years, so kind of, we've tried to, we've prioritized, and we've also kind of identified a limited amount of resources that we would focus on, so maybe kind of give us a, how you plan on using, do.
Yeah, thank you, Chris, that's, that's correct. We're setting, we set aside $500,000 in our annual CIP. You can see from the list that that will get us through some of the first priorities in a reasonable period of time, but then we kind of hit, I'll go up a little bit, but then, you know, we start getting into some projects that are, you know, many millions of dollars. So, what we would anticipate is that we would kind of save up that half a million dollars a year, until we're in a place that we can afford some of these projects. That's why we do anticipate that, frankly, this will take quite a number of years.
But, the idea is a start.
Yeah. Taking a bite of the elephant.
And go after the highest priority, one first, obviously, and recognizing that what drives us a lot is not, I mean, the age we watch results in is septics that may create endangerment to the environment, to the aquifer, I think we, we kind of talked about the prioritization, but some of those areas it went into is not only the age of the septic and the area that's in, but this, the idea we have seen, and I think Christine's shown some examples in the past, is it really does create a hazard for surrounding neighbors, for the residents, and ultimately, and our greatest concern, or one of our greater concerns, would be the aquifer itself. Now, that hasn't happened, but just the potential of that happening is of great concern to us. So, that's why we established this as a priority, and we appreciate Councilwoman Higgins kind of helping us, you know, define this better as a priority, but it really does need to be priority for us, especially in a very urban area which Mesa has now become. Some of these areas were developed probably when they were just in the county, and now we've kind of surrounded them, so we, and the idea, I think this is a program, we're really trying to look at it, so that when, by the time we get there with these programs, that these homeowners will see this actually as a better option than the septic system they have today. Is that fair?
Yes, you did a great job with that.
Mr. Summers.
I'm just curious, for the, let's assume at some point, everybody in these red areas ends up hooked up into, into the sewer system, and we receive their hookup fees and charges, how much over that time will those fees, the impact fees, turn out to pay for the bonds we're going to have to float in order to pay for this?
The impact fees basically are used for pledged debt for the expansion of required infrastructure, in this case, the wastewater system. I don't have an exact number, but I think it, the pledged debt on wastewater impact fees is many, many years.
Is there a limited time that we can collect impact fees for infrastructure install, if we install it today? Do we have only 10 years in order to collect an impact fee?
Yeah, we will be back to council within the next couple of months, talking about what we're going to do on impact fees, because, as you know, there was several new state requirements. Basically, what we are going to recommend, I guess this is a preview of the discussion we're going to have later, is to continue to use our existing impact fees to pay down the pledged debt in the programs where we have it. So, the recommendation is likely to be, after we've had more discussion, that we'll continue the existing pledged debt that we have for the wastewater impact fees. The statute did place a limitation on building infrastructure, if we do an infrastructure improvement plan, which quite frankly, we are not going to do at this point, and that placed a 15-year cap on completion of water and wastewater facilities. But, the way we're moving forward, we don't think that that's going to affect us.
Okay, but if somebody, if the majority of people in here wait more than 15 years, they won't have to pay the impact fee? Is that right? Or --
No, no.
The improvements are done.
The improvements are done.
Yeah, we anticipate that we will continue to collect the water and wastewater impact fees into unlimited future.
Yeah, that won't be a problem.
No, and we'll, when we come back, like Christine's saying, there's a lot of changes in impact fee rules, and so, we have a whole presentation, bring back to council, and then maybe we can tie that back into this, when we make that presentation.
Okay, and as, I mean, we've tallied up the total city cost for all the infrastructure, did we, do we have an estimate of what the impact fees we would collect would be?
Go ahead. Okay, the impact fees don't come close to meeting the demand, the average, approximate wastewater impact fee, I think, is about $27, $2600. So, the impact fees lag way behind what the infrastructure needs are.
Okay, so, have we considered other, I mean, kind of the problem I'm having here is that a lot of these areas are in the county, they're not even in the city, so they don't want to be part of the city. Some of them are, but, and even, some of them are small, and probably really no, very little impact to us, anyway. When my house was built, the developer had to put in that infrastructure.
Right.
So, they rolled that infrastructure into the cost of the house. So, when my subdivision was built, when I bought my house, I paid for that infrastructure to be there, as it's in my mortgage right now.
Right.
And now, we have some 50,000 people who are within the municipal planning area, either inside the city of Mesa or outside, who aren't going to be paying for that, they're asking the rest of the 440,000 people here to pay for the infrastructure, to make it cheaper for them to hook up, without having to bear the cost of that.
And, over the last several years, we've had that discussion. It's particularly problematic for single-family residents that come in, the cost of extending a sewer line in particular, is extremely expensive, if they're quite a ways away from it. And as we've looked at all of the options, and it's a very difficult issue, that's why we came up with this program, that sort of incrementally, over a very long period of time, we could bring in, or the city could bring in the major infrastructure line, which is the main sewer line going down the middle of the road, but then, the resident, when their septic system goes bad, they would have to pay for the cost of connecting to the sewer line, and bringing it back on their property to the house.
Right, which is what I did.
Right, and that's what we're planning, that we're --
It's just, it's just the, the cost of extending that line is being borne by existing residents who've already paid through, their mortgage paid, helped pay for the cost of installing that, and some folks who decided to build in the county, or own in the county, because there are fewer regulations, makes it cheaper, are now going to get the benefit of the rest of us paying for their sewer lines to be installed up in the street. They still have to pay the connection fee, and some impact fees, but it's a heck of a lot less than what I'm having to pay. Have we looked at CFD possibility in the county?
You know, Councilmembers, Summers, we've, we've looked at a lot of different options, and I can tell you, there, there is no easy solution to the, to the problem. We felt that this program -- was explaining, it is unrealistic to ask a single-family residential, existing home to pay, you know, $50,000, $60,000, $70,000 to bring a sewer, the public sewer line to their property boundary. It...
But that's a little bit different what I'm saying.
No, I...
I mean, I'm 10 houses in from the end of my street, too, and that, that cost was borne by all the members along that street.
Right.
Whereas if you're 10 houses in, away from a sewer line and within that radius, you have to pay the entire cost, and then hope to collect from your neighbors down the street as they start hooking into the system.
Right, and I agree. And we did look at the CFD option. We did look at whether it would be possible to create some districts in some of these areas. There are some real risks with CFDs as well. And it ultimately hinges on a vote of the property owners. And if you don't get the vote, the district fails. And, right...
They don't get their service.
Well, right. But we felt that this program was a reasonable compromise, because there is a public health issue involved that we felt was pertinent to everyone who is in the system. It helps protect everyone in the system. So we were hoping that this program is, would be a reasonable compromise between what is a hardship for individuals, and what is a hardship frankly, for the entire system.
So, and one last question, if I may. When you went through the ranking, did you give preference to these communities that are already in the city?
Yes, we did.
The first three are...
That's what I thought I was looking at, but I just wanted clarification.
Yes.
The other priority that we talked about, and it goes to the public health piece of it, is when we have septics that are near a well. That's really the major potential for having, excuse me, leaking septics contaminating the aquifer. So that was one of the public health priorities that we also included.
If it's such a public health issue, where's the county? Why is the county not helping lead this? They have a whole health department. You would think they would be involved in partnering with Mesa to try to find a solution here that wouldn't be a fiscal burden to the city of Mesa and its residents.
Right, well, I will say, to the county's credit, over the last five years, they have worked much more closely with us on this issue than they have in the past.
As long as they don't have to pay for it.
Right, so, but they have been working more closely with us, and we do appreciate that. And also, they are beginning, there is some pressure, in some of these areas, these are not, that are not sewer, some of these are not just single-family residential properties, some of these are commercial properties. And the county is doing a better job of going after the large commercial properties that have very large septic systems, and forcing them to convert. So they, I think they are trying also to tackle this problem. It is just a very complicated, difficult, and expensive problem.
Councilmember Richens.
You know, it goes back to a lot of different issues that we have in the city. We have street lighting standards that are different on the west side than in new subdivisions in the east. And we've expressed, talked a little bit about undergrounding power lines, and that's something that's going to be very expensive, that we have to do over a very long period of time. We do these things because it improves the quality of life of all of our residents. There's a lot of county people who drive on city roads, and they don't pay for that. You know, they don't have that privilege. But it's the right thing to do, both environmentally, it's the right thing to do from a cost standpoint to all of our, and many of these will annex over time, I'm sure, but, you know, it is, this is city building. And city building is expensive, it takes a long time, you have to be patient. The dynamic we're so used to is the impact fee subdivision model, where they come and do this. This is how it was done 50 years ago, before impact fees were invented. You know, you extend infrastructure, and the city grows out to wherever you're going to extend that infrastructure. And so it's methodical, and it's ugly, but, you know, really, from a, from the aqua, you know, environmental protection standpoint, it is the right thing to do. And yeah, it's going to take a long time, and I really appreciate the work that you put in, because I was one of the people that pushed you towards doing this, because constantly we're getting people coming to us wanting to get a variance to allow their septic. And our only alternative was that they, we had to charge them $50,000 to hook into a, something that was, you know, a certain number of feet, and there was weird calculations that had to happen, and it just got cumbersome after a while. But, you know, it'll be interesting to see which neighborhoods bubble to the surface that have expressed a lot of interest. I think that's the right way to go about it as well. I appreciate the ranking system you went through, so thank you for the hard work you did here. And I know it's, it wasn't easy to do this, but, because I was one of the ones that asked you to do it, thank you. I think you've done a great job and come up with a great compromise.
Thank you.
If I could just go back to Councilmember Summers' question about, no? Never mind.
How dare you do this hard work?
One of the relationship-building projects that we've been working on with the county is that, kind of the key to this whole thing, they now, because we've tried to, we have successfully improved communication, they acquire a letter from the city of Mesa before they will allow major renovation to a septic system or a new septic system. So from that standpoint, it's been very helpful, so we are trying to make incremental steps there. But I think I could speak for the county in saying, they don't have unlimited dollars either to come in and solve the problem. But at least we're working a lot more closely together.
And I appreciate it, and don't take it, don't take it wrong, because, and at risk of making this look like a good cop, bad cop kind of routine over here on your right side of the dais, it's, you know, it's a little bit different situation. The county does pave roads, mostly. They have standards, sort of. We might have to go in and clean up inverted crowns from time to time, but they do, they do, they, the county does things. They have a health program, they have roads. We receive money from the county, we receive money from the state, we have regional taxes that pay for transportation. So that burden at least is somewhat shared throughout the city. Is it to the best service? No, but it seems to me that there's a significant lack of service. And perhaps I'm blaming the wrong entity, the counties are bound only by what the state legislature allows them to do. They can't provide certain services because it's not within their charter to do so. And it just, to be extending these services is a little bit different, because it is an enterprise, it's not a tax. So it's a general fund operation. So I'm concerned with continuously having to shoulder the burden of paying for, you know, for bad planning in the past. David mentioned, the way it used to work was you extended the infrastructure, and that was where the growth went. So you, it was the old way, the better way of doing business. But this is a great example of how that system didn't work either, because it, there was still leapfrog growth to areas where we had an extended service. So...
Can I just add one thing?
Yeah.
We got to point out that a lot of these areas are areas we annexed in after they were already built out. So we knew, we should have known what we were getting into when we annexed them in. So it wasn't like they just were out there building, we took them into the city. So now they're part of us.
And if I could add, Councilmember Summers, Councilwoman Higgins, there is one really important difference between, you know, the road analogy and the sewer analogy, and that is that a county road can, at least to some degree, can, you know, physically connect to a city road. And unfortunately, that's just not the case for a sewer system. We own the sewer system, we can't have the county go out and actually build a separate sewer system that then connects into our system. It doesn't work, unfortunately. I hear what you're saying, and I do wish that the county would put some money towards this effort, but I think as Christine mentioned, I'm sure their resources are also very limited.
Any other questions? Well, great. My personal feeling, thank you. Myself, along with Councilmember Richens, watching over four years, we struggled through this. This is a plan, at least. Now we're in the right direction, it'll probably have to be tweaked, so we appreciate you doing that and going through it. So if there's no other questions, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next item is to acknowledge receipt of minutes of various boards and committees. Second and moved, all in favor? Aye. Here are reports on meetings or conferences attended. None? Okay. Scheduling of meetings. Mr. Brady.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Tonight, we have a Building Stronger Neighborhoods Initiative in District 6. From 6:30 to 7:30 at the Light in the Desert Church, which is located at 7930 East Baseline Councilmember Kavanaugh reminded us that we have a coffee with a council member tomorrow, from 7:30 to 8:30 a.m. at the Village Inn at 1155 South Dobson Road. We have Dobson and Southern, I think that's what that is. Also this weekend is the Falcon Field Airport's Fifth Annual Open House. It'll be from 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at the airport. So invite everybody there, it's a mission, and parking are free. We are, they are accepting donations of canned food for the United Food Bank. Our next study session will be Thursday, March 28th.
Great, thank you, sir. Ms. Mickelson, any requests to speak?
No, Vice Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Motion for adjournment? We have a motion, second, all in favor? Aye. We are adjourned.